We'll call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Abraham?
Here.
Ms. Baumann?
Excused.
Ms. Como?
Here.
Dr. Cooper-Stoll?
Here.
Dr. Jimenez?
Here.
Ms. Leahy?
Excused.
Mr. Lee?
Excused.
Mr. Korberg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey?
Absent.
A quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of July 19th, 2021 is called to order. We recognize that the Hogan Administrative Center occupies the land of the Ho-Chunk people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho-Chunk land and the sacred lands of all indigenous peoples. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented in second.
Okay, so with a motion by Mr. Korberg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the agenda as presented. May, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion has carried. I believe nobody is registered to speak this evening, so we will move on to the approval of the superintendent's consent agenda.
Don, you're gonna have to...
I don't have it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Korberg and a second by Ms. Como, the items on the superintendent's consent agenda are approved as presented unless there is anybody who disagrees. Hearing none, we will move on to the approval of the board consent agenda. And both consent agendas are a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that comes before the body. Are there any items that we need to remove from the board consent agenda? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Board.
Consent agenda.
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Korberg, a second by Ms. Como, the items on the board consent agenda are approved as presented unless anybody has a reason to say that they would like a vote. Hearing none. Let's move on to the annual academic standards notice, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
So annually, we must approve academic standards by state law, and so this is the time at which the school board traditionally does so, has to be the first meeting after July 1st. We presented those academic standards last month for information, and so seeking approval of the academic standards for the 21, 22 school year.
Make a motion to approve the academic standards for the 21, 22 school year as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. So moved by Ms. Como, seconded by Mr. Abraham to adopt the Wisconsin academic standards in all discipline areas under section 11830, sub 1G, sub A, sub 1 of the state statutes for the 2021, 2022 school year. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the motion has carried. And now we will move on to the resolution authorizing and approving the transfer of real property and a temporary limited easement to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Dr. Engel?
Anytime we involve things of this nature requires board action. I can let Ms. Spring explain in more detail.
Sure, so they're putting in a roundabout right by Southern Bluffs Elementary, and our sign is a little bit on the property. So they're, they're buying that sliver, and we are maintaining our sign, but we're gonna move it back. So that is what is happening. So it's probably a good idea because we're, there's a lot of new homes across the way on the highway, so.
Wonderful. So is there a motion pursuant to Wisconsin statute 12044, 12013, sub 3, and 12013, sub 19M? The motion would be that the Board of Education of the district hereby authorizes and approves the transfer of the real property and a temporary limited easement to the Wisconsin Department of Transportation as described above and as shown on project plat 5163-07-20-4.01, recorded as document number 1750720. I think it's the longest motion ever.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Como and seconded by Mr. Korberg to do what I just said, to approve the transfer of the real property and a temporary limited easement as described earlier. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's a roll call vote.
Oh, we do need a roll call vote. Okay, so then, thank you for that. Can I have, Kelly, could you do that for us?
Certainly. Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper-Stoll?
Aye.
Mr. Korberg?
Aye.
And Dr. Jimenez?
Aye. Motion has carried. Thank you. Next, we will move on to our information section, and we will look at operational expectation monitoring report OE 8, communicating with and support for the board. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel.
Excellent. So operational expectations monitoring, this is part of the board's critical job to ensure that we're monitoring policies and holding administration accountable for the policies that the board has in place. OE 8 is related to communicating and support for the board. So the superintendent shall ensure that the board is fully supported and adequately informed about matters relating to board work and significant district concern. And then there's a series of objectives listed below, 13 of them. So I'll talk through those briefly and highlight a couple of things. So OE 8.1 is the superintendent will submit required monitoring data in a thorough, accurate, and understandable fashion according to the board's annual work plan schedule, and including both superintendent interpretations and relevant data to document compliance or reasonable progress. So we've included the board docs' record of results and operational expectations monitoring reports, and also some examples for OE monitoring and results monitoring that have been submitted to date. And then we've also indicated that we would utilize the board's annual work plan and submitted GC6E and a tracking document that includes links to all of those monitoring reports. We feel that that makes us compliant in following that monitoring process. OE 8.2, the superintendent will provide for the board in a timely manner information about trends, facts, and other information relevant to the board's work. The first measure is in matters of urgent issues or imminent media coverage, the superintendent provides timely updates to the Board of Education. Listed here as evidence are news articles, masking guidance, long-range facilities plans, MOUs for the SRO program, city tax inserts, central mascot, various matters that the school board has been communicated with to be made avail, made aware of these issues as they come up. Indicator 2, in communication with the Board of Education, the superintendent provides relevant information, and so this identifies workshops where topics were brought up with relevant information provided to the Board of Education, including roles and responsibilities, long-range facility planning, coherent governance, performance expectations, reopening plans, so. And there's also an additional piece of evidence, a compliance documentation letter indicating the board was provided weekly updates via email from the superintendent. OE 8.3, the superintendent will inform the board of significant transfers of money with funds, within funds, or other changes substantially affecting the district's financial condition. Indicator 1 is the superintendent informs the board of significant transfers. We did not have any significant transfers of money within funds. The school board did approve end-of-year budget transfers, and we listed those there while those were in excess of $250,000. They didn't technically meet that criteria, but I wanted to make sure that there was transparency there as it relates to large sums of money in the school district. OE 8.4, superintendent will ensure the board has adequate information from a variety of internal and external viewpoints to ensure informed board decisions. The indicator 1, provide adequate information for board members to fulfill their elected responsibilities. We identify monitoring reports, the SRO report, long-range facilities planning information, strategic plan for educational equity, all of which helped the board fulfill their elected responsibilities. The superintendent considers a variety of viewpoints in communication to the Board of Education. We identify the district leadership team and policy review committee, providing feedback and insight on policies and procedures. We also identify in developing the strategic plan for educational equity, a variety of groups that the superintendent and others met with to gain input to create that, that document. Stop me along the way if you have questions or want clarification, but I'm gonna keep on otherwise. OE 8.5, the superintendent will advise the board of changes and assumptions upon which board policy has been established. There were no major changes of assumptions per that definition there. OE 8.6, the superintendent will inform the board of anticipated significant media coverage. The indicator is there are no complaints that the board was uninformed about wide-scale media coverage. This one was kind of interesting. What is like significant media coverage include? And so using that definition listed above, appear in the local media, including newspaper, radio, and television. We did not have any complaints about being uninformed about those issues. OE 8.7, the superintendent will, if in the superintendent's opinion, the board or individual members have encroached into areas of responsibility assigned to the superintendent, or if the board or its members are noncompliant with any of its GC BSR policies, the superintendent will inform the board using the following process. This is an awkward one. If I don't think the board's doing the right thing, but regardless. So the superintendent reports specifics of any significant noncompliance with GC or BSR policies. There were no significant noncompliance from my perspective as a superintendent. And then indicator 2, the superintendent informs the board if individual members encroach into areas of responsibility assigned to the superintendent. I did not report any incidents of that either, so zero for both of those. OE 8.8, the superintendent will present information in simple and concise form, indicating clearly whether the information is incidental, intended for decision preparation, or for formal monitoring. And our measure is board agendas are organized, so the agenda items are clearly organized for communication of monitoring results or compliance or for action. I think our agendas are very well organized and have indicated a link to board docs showing how they are. It's pretty clear what the expectation is. And I think in recent months, I've gotten better about clarifying even those individual action items about why it's being presented and what the action that the board has to take is, and why. Indicator 2, superintendent presents information in a simple and concise form, indicating clearly whether the information is incidental, intended for decision preparation or formal monitoring. Evidence, we give organization of board agendas. We present, the information presented for monitoring reports is listed there. The three-year summary. Oh goodness, I lost my spot. 8.8. And items that were non-monitoring but required, there's notes there on what the expectation is and why they're presented. OE 8.9, superintendent will treat all members impartially and ensure that all members have equal access to information. I attached a compliance documentation letter indicating that materials for board meetings and workshop sessions were presented to all members at the same time. OE 8.10, the superintendent will inform the board in a timely manner of any actual or anticipated noncompliance with board operational expectation policy, or any anticipated failure to achieve reasonable progress towards any results policy. Once again, we included that monitoring process, and that two OE policies were categorized as in compliance with exceptions. So we're identifying that we did not make the progress we wanted to. OE 8.11, provide the board adequate information about all administrative actions and decisions that are delegated to the superintendent but required by law to be approved by the board. There are a series of actions where this happens, and we've identified those and linked to those board agendas, including approval of budget amendments, adoption of academic standards like we did today and at the same time last year, and employee handbooks and others. Absolutely. OE 8.12, the superintendent will inform the board in a timely manner of the final disposition of complaints referred to the superintendent by the board. There were no complaints brought to the superintendent by the board, and a compliance law letter indicates that. And then the superintendent will inform the board in advance of any deletions or additions to, or significant modifications of, any administrative policies and/or instructional programs. And despite lots of work on those this year, we have yet to formalize any of those changes due to lots of reasons. And so there are none to be updated as of yet, but will be many forthcoming. And that is OE 8. There's a lot there. So please let me know if you have any questions, dispute any of our designations, or would like clarification on anything.
So are there any comments or suggestions or of room for improvement, or is, if everybody agrees with the superintendent's recommendation? So any questions or comments from the board at this point in time?
I like all the links. I personally, I'm sorry. I like the links that you had, which are the key.
Yes.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question, and it would include the, the links as well. So this is the first time that you've had an opportunity to submit the monitoring report for review. And as you know, part of this process and the reason behind why it comes forward for assistance information item is for us to be able to discuss that and also to be thinking about whether any changes might need to be made by the board going forward. And so now that you've had an opportunity to complete this report, are there things that you would like the board to consider in terms, because there is a lot here. Are there things that you would like the board to consider in terms of that policy as we evaluate that moving forward? Were there things that you thought might have, could be done better, or if there were things that were redundant that could be done where we don't miss out on the important information that we need but could streamline it? That's something the board would always be interested in?
I think a couple of the individual indicators that are listed are probably redundant. You know, we end up attaching the same compliance letter for both. We could probably streamline the indicator itself. The, all of the primary items, I think, are reasonable and what a board would want in terms of understanding if, you know, getting the information you want. You know, a lot of it comes down to like, I'm presenting information justifying that position, but for this one in particular, did you feel like you were communicated with as really your opinion, you know? So trying to generate the specific items that would demonstrate that, you know, is challenging in some ways, you know. It would be helpful, you know, almost if the board would provide like, well, there was this time where I didn't feel like I was notified, you know, on time, you know. If I didn't hear that throughout the year, or, you know, oftentimes, you're looking back a year, it's hard to remember. So this OE in particular, like to get those dates, you know, I ended up reviewing every single board meeting that we had and looking at all the documents and agenda items. That was actually a really good process for me to kind of like review the year and go through that, and it, this timing actually works out pretty well for that. But depending on what goes on in a year, it may be harder or easier to generate some of these lists, which is probably the challenge of every OE. I think like our financial one, you know, like those are pretty routine items, you know. You can identify where those are. Some of these, you're trying to like remember, did I, did we communicate that? So I was like searching emails and, and other things. And so I would say it was, you know, maybe a little more time intensive, but not in a bad way. Other potential change, the one that's kind of odd is the inform the board in a timely, or no, no.
To mark on the board?
Yeah.
We discussed it thoroughly at coming up with these, and it really was, in case we have a rogue person who decides to go directly to you and, and not follow the board procedures, we need to have that check on ourselves also. Because if we don't have that, somebody can just keep coming to you, and this way, there's something within the policy that stops us from doing that. We have our chain of command and our process that we have to follow. You're just that checkmark.
Yeah, the question I have is, is this, through this process, is it the best way to inform the board that that has happened? You know, is it gonna be effective in like changing board activity? You know, so like normally, you know, if board member comes to me and says, hey, you need to change this policy now, or you need to let this kid have an exception, you know, I was like, whoa, you know, this may be not our role, let's talk about that. How can we like navigate this? If it's persistent, you know, then I would talk to the school board president and say, hey, I'm experiencing this from one of the board members, I need some help in, in managing this situation. To then turn around and like be obligated to report that in a public setting feels a little awkward.
Wasn't it that it had to be a policy in order for it to be enforced?
It does have to be a policy. I think there can be some discussion about whether or not, I think there's some confidentiality to be had with that clearly. So it, it might be that that addresses that sort of public nature of that. But when Randy and Linda were here to guide us through the process, they felt it was important to, they encouraged the incorporation of that as well, to ensure that there is a formal means, so that no one board member is treated, you could have two folks, for example, who violated, violated that policy but were treated differently.
Sure.
And the result of that. But I think there are ways that can be, we can think about how to do that. And I would even suggest at this point that the board consider how we want to then move, since you, since I've asked, if you had some suggestions, and you do have some suggestions for us to think about, then I would, I think that we need to decide as a board whether or not if we wanted then have you submit, you know, that feedback to us. And then, of course, it would be up to the board president to schedule that into an agenda for a discussion. But I think personally, as a board member, then what the next step would be is if you would sort of codify what those, that feedback, so that we could review it as a board. But obviously, as a board member, it's not my role to, to, you know, ask you to do that specifically. So I'd be curious if other board members think that's the next best step, is to have you provide that feedback so we can move forward.
I think since it's the first time around, I, that makes sense to me.
Well, and I think, just looking back on our conversations, while you were school board president, and then with Dr. Jimenez as well, you know, what's the, what's the appropriate timeline? And I think, you know, we had discussed, do we kind of let everything get through twice almost, you know, and after we see it the second time, we'll have two points, you know, to really understand, like, is this appropriate, is this not appropriate? And then that second time that we see it, I could see making like a formal recommendation, like, hey, here's some things that I would recommend from the administrative perspective for changes to the monitoring reports. And then at that time, the board would maybe address that on a rolling cycle moving forward, but maybe giving it a year, you know, to, I would be happy to generate this report in its exact format again, before, you know, the board goes dives into like changing policy.
Well, I think that's also, but that's why, this is also an opportunity for the board to decide whether or not they feel like the attachments that you included
Oh, yes.
Get at the spirit of what is intended by that policy. I think those two things go together. I have to tell you, I don't remember a conversation about two cycles going through. Because in practice, it should be one cycle.
Yes.
So that means we would be at that moment now.
Absolutely.
In terms of this one. But I think that that would be valuable feedback if you feel like you don't, you would recommend that nothing be changed and that it continue the way it is, and the board should take that into consideration as to whether or not they want to accept that moving forward.
Just jumping in, you asked the question exactly that I had on my mind, you know, what are, how is this working? Is it working well? Is it not working well? What are suggestions for improvement that we can have? And so, yeah, if you have some of those, I think this would be a prime time for us to look at that. I think your point is well taken about, I think it's 8.7, where we're looking at the potential, there could be a potential of a confidentiality piece there. And at least, we should have that conversation. Luckily, we didn't have anything to report, but we should definitely have the conversation on that point particularly.
Maybe within that, not necessarily blurting our name or blurting our, but yes, one incident occurred, or I agree with confidentiality. Nobody wants to get called out in the middle of, of a meeting, but it has to be noted that somebody potentially did cross that line.
Absolutely. No, fortunately, there was no incidents of that this year.
Yes.
But I think it would be able to say, you know, five times, like I had a conversation with the school board president regarding an individual's actions.
You know, I think I would also add that since this is the first cycle that we're going through, I think there is also some value, if, if, if you feel that even though there are places where changes could be made, obviously, it's at the discretion of the board. However, the board is open to feedback that you have as a superintendent. So even if there are suggestions you have for improving this, but you think it would create more of a hardship than to go through it for one more cycle, then it's important for us to have that information too. It sounds like that's what you're saying, that it would be your, at least, hope that we would keep those indicators the same, and then perhaps reevaluate it another time.
Yeah, I, I think it would be worth it to do it one more time to see if I have the same opinion next year. And I am also interested in feedback, not just on the policy, but like, is the evidence that is submitted sufficient, you know, for some of those items, you know? Because this one is particularly, it's, it's less like, I can point to the specific thing that meets that definition. It's more, does the evidence I provide match your experience as far as being and feeling like you were informed, understanding those information items? You know, so I don't, hopefully, as you read through this, it matched up with that, you know, and my assessment matches yours. But I think in this one in particular, there could be a, a difference in understanding as far as what those indicators are, so.
Other comments from the board? So I'll just ask, you know, do, do we feel like we are in agreement in terms of compliance on this OE from the board?
I don't have any issue with the...
Yeah. I don't either.
...submission.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I think that we, we'd probably end up moving in compliance for OE 8. I would, you know, maybe that's something for us to consider still, though. I think the OE 8.7, the confidentiality piece is just something that we should at least have a conversation, maybe not necessarily move to make a change, but at least have a conversation about whether there's something to be done there.
Yeah, and I would, Dr. Jimenez, I think, because it, that's a fairly simple change.
Yeah.
I mean, historically, if it's been something fairly minor, and the conversation around the table has been that, in a general agreement with that, I think that's something also that you could just bring forward.
Sure.
As a change. And then if there were any discussion at that time, but otherwise, something to approve, I'm not hearing any real pushback about adding the confidentiality piece to that.
Yeah, so maybe Dr. Engel, you and I can have a conversation, and then we can bring back our, our conversation to the board at the next board meeting.
Sounds good.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, everybody, for the conversation. We will move on to the next agenda item, which is the Code of Conduct, Student Rights and Responsibilities. And Dr. Engel?
So this is an item that we have traditionally bought before the school board. Where it fits in exactly as far as a board responsibility versus administrative action has been a bit of a question. That said, we've traditionally presented this to the school board because it impacts so much of our students' lives, including potentially even expelling them, you know. So that's where it starts to intersect in the school board's responsibility, and we want to make sure that the board understands how we approach the Code of Rights and Responsibilities, the process that we take in developing that, so that if it gets to the point where you have to be involved, it's not the first time you're hearing about the Code of Rights and Responsibilities. And Kurt Teff will talk about the document, how it's developed. And first, I'll let Dr. Harcy add anything for context before Kurt gets going.
I think that's a great introduction. We'll turn it over.
Excellent.
Well, thanks for having me tonight and a chance to talk a little bit about our Code of Rights and Responsibilities. So in Wisconsin, under statute, every school district needs to maintain some type of documents typically called a Code of Conduct that outline student expectations and, and the like. So our version of that, we call the Student Code of Rights and Responsibilities. Been named that for a long, long time, over, over almost 30 years. And it's gone through a number of changes. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit about some of the changes that have happened, because we have some new board members, and the last few years have seen some of the most sizable change, changes. One of the changes that we made is that this is now part of an annual review process. So back in 19, 2019, 2020, one of the things that we recognized was there was just really not a strong process for review of the code. not a strong process for review of the Code of Conduct or Code of Rights and Responsibilities. There wasn't a whole lot of involvement. Actually, if you look at the twenty eighteen, nineteen, and, and, you know, even almost thirty years prior, code was substantively about the same, you know, nominal changes. And so, one of the adjustments that we made was to make it an annual feedback process. Starts with kind of a focus and design. So we take a look at some of the issues, some of the, some of the trends, some of the priorities that we hear about as we talk with students, or as we talk with families or community members. We work on planning and feedback. And so, we've done a lot of work in terms of identifying groups to be able to meet with, to be able to get feedback. We design and facilitate these sessions to get feedback from those groups. And then we try to pull all this information together. And you'll be able to see probably in the PowerPoint, if you had a chance to review it, we've got a lot of feedback from our community. Try to, try to make sense of that and bring a little bit of order to that and integrate it into our, into our code. So just hit a few highlights on some of the bigger design changes over the years. So nineteen twenty was a pretty significant adjustment to our Code of Rights, really in terms of everything, from the way it looks to what, what was included in it for, for our new board members. Our, our previous codes really focused on, you know, essentially, the, all the sorts of things kids can do to get in trouble and how we respond to that. And a lot of it was outdated. So we updated a lot of that, updated the appeals process, which is included in our, our code now. That, after that first year that we were meeting with stakeholders, actually, students came forward and said, you know, one of the, a good area to focus on would be our dress policy. And so, last year, the big, or the previous year, not last school year, twenty twenty twenty-one, our focus was around student dress. And we had discussions with families and students about that and updated our dress policy. And then this past year, really coming out of the School Resource Officer Report that Doc, Dr. Engel had presented, we really felt it'd be appropriate to talk about a discipline philosophy, something that helped anchor the, the document that we could point to, you know, whenever a staff member or administrator is thinking about, how should I handle this? Really, some principles to be able to review so we can make good decisions for kids and families. This year was a unique year because we were remote for so much of it. And so, we designed everything around compression planning. If you've had any experience with compression planning, it's really about intentional design of a meeting, knowing that we were meeting with so many stakeholder groups. We were intentional about our purpose, our non-purpose, the questions that we were asking, the background that we gave them, so we could really have some, some focused discussion around the, the code. You can see the design questions. We worded, we changed wording for each of the groups a little bit differently, but the, the general themes were things that don't work around discipline for kids, or make, or even make things worse sometimes. Practices that are effective, that we should try to expand or include, things that really seem to make a difference. We also talked about limitations on the use of suspension. And we also talked about limitations on our use of law enforcement, when, when we should have police in our schools. So you can see below that stakeholder groups, we met with a middle school group and a high school group, a couple different parent groups, a couple different community stakeholder groups, and then three staff groups. And because of COVID, we did all this virtually. And so, the next slide on this, we ended up using Zoom and Padlet. So Padlets are phenomenal tool to be able to collect feedback and, and get, get input from folks. So what, what you'll see on that next slide is really a compression planning board. And it outlines, this, I think, was our middle school group, but outlines the design of our time and, and then the focus questions that we had asked. One of the nice things about Padlet is it does offer confidential ways for people to be able to give feedback on all the ideas that come forward, which was excellent. And with Zoom, we had some students who were participating, who didn't feel comfortable sharing even in a Zoom context. We were getting private messages and things like that. So thankfully, Ami Zabrowski and Alicia Place were helping to facilitate because it was, we had information coming in and ideas and, and trying to capture it all. But really, I felt like a positive, a positive experience for folks. And, and at the end of them, we always asked for feedback on the experience and, and people felt it was, given the circumstances, a, a pretty smooth way to be able to visit. So the stakeholder feedback, you can see a big grid there. And so, from a facilitation standpoint, we, we took down what people shared, you know, and kind of verbatim captured what input they had. But we did need to make sense of this because we had so much feed, feedback across so many different topics. And what really emerged was remarks around staff dispositions, how, you know, staff think about, feel about, interact with students, systems that we have in place to support student behavior, and then the practices. And so that you can see in, in that grid, that's really how we organize the, the feedback and tried to find themes. So what you're seeing in this big grid is top ideas that came by stakeholder group and then, then by focus area. Our new District Discipline Committee then took this grid. And we were actually able to meet in person. We met in the Hogan Gym and had poster board up. And you can see some pictures of the poster board. And we had this group go through and identify common themes across the groups and, and capture that. The committee also identified other essential priorities. So, you know, maybe things that weren't common themes, but as a discipline committee, they really felt that were important to be able to include. And out of that, we developed a draft of the discipline philosophy to include in the code. Biggest changes to the code this year, pages three and four include our discipline philosophy, which is again organized around staff dispositions, systems, practices. And then with the feedback that we received on limitations of suspension and police involvement, we made some updates to the interventions and restorative responses on page nineteen. And you can see, you know, some of the, some of the adjustments, we cleaned it up and tried to trim it down, but most importantly, really reserved suspension for the most serious behaviors, which was just a, really a common theme across all groups, this, the interest in working with students and working to keep them in schools. So final slide is kind of an updated annual feedback process. So really, the only thing that's going to change moving forward is we, we will be working with the new committees, the District Discipline Committee, as well as the anticipated SRO Advisory Committee, to really be able to help us identify themes that we will have focused conversation around. And so, we'll be, we'll be working with those groups. And we've got a discipline, District Discipline Committee meeting coming up. And I know one of the focus topics that we're designing is parental involvement in the discipline process. It's very likely that could be, you know, a potential focus for this year. So, but all in all, thought with, with COVID, felt like the feedback was positive, participation was, was great. And we're proud of the code that we were able to work with the community to, to help update this year. So with that, any questions?
Any questions from the board?
More of a comment. It was nice, actually, going out to Skyward and registering my child and having a Code of Conduct booklet that you actually had to scroll through. So you'd actually, you know, see those grids of, oh, well, if Mickey gets in trouble, here's a grid that tells me where to look, or here's the, the form that I need to fill out. And I also liked the Code of Conduct, I'm saying that word with quote, for online meetings, the, what is required for online meetings. And so, I appreciate that, that it is now not just a link to click on, but something you actually have to scroll through in order to get to the bottom and approve. So thank you for that.
Excellent. Thanks. Other comments?
I have a question. So is this like a living document? So, for example, next year, I wouldn't, or in the next school year, I wouldn't anticipate a major redesign again. But if something comes up, is there, is that, is there something in place where you can look at that and then implement changes?
Yeah, so the annual process is to identify changes. So we'll take, you know, when we have these focus discussions, we'll take any feedback on the code and, and consider, consider changes. The focus really is just trends that we want to identify and incorporate. So, yeah, we see it as, don't think it's perfect. It's gotten a lot better over the last three years, but, but we, we do want it to be representative of our community and our, our staff and our parents and students. So.
How were the stakeholder groups selected?
So for the parent groups, we're generally working with the district-wide parents groups. And then we're working with outreach groups. So Southside Moms United, we had reached out to Northside Moms United, which is a community, community group. For community stakeholders, we had reached out to different organizations. We actually looked at some of the organizations who had spoke as part of the forum for the SRO feedback and asked them for, you know, folks who might want to participate or sit on those groups. This year, we did kind of keep those groups separate. So we had a community group and we had, you know, parent group kind of separately within that. For the student groups, we ask principals to be able to identify students that are representative of their communities, of their school community. And so, that, that's an important part, you know, making sure that there's representation on, on those teams as well.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yep, I have a comment and a question. First of all, I appreciate the work that was done to bring in more different groups to, to provide feedback and that it was a collaborative and iterative process. And I appreciate the effort to develop a, a, a discipline philosophy to guide it. So I just want to thank you for your work on that. And the question I have, I don't know if it's really should be addressed to you, Kurt, or to superintendent. But in thinking about this discipline philosophy that's now been developed, I'd like to know about the accountability piece to it. So is this something that is now going to be incorporated into administrative policy? Because it's a great philosophy, but how do we make sure that it is adhered to? So again, I don't know if it's one, both, I don't know who should answer that question.
I'll give Kurt the first crack at it.
Sure. Yeah, well, we're, we are talking with our administrative groups about this. So they, they've seen this document. And one of the things that we have been talking with, like our parents about, because that, that's one of the things that parents will bring up in their, in their sessions with us, is these experiences where they feel like things are, are happening related to discipline, that they aren't necessarily being treated fairly, like they don't have a path to be able to address that. And so, one of the things that we are going to be developing, and this is more around parent advocacy, to make sure that they know there's a pathway to get resolution. Sometimes our folks aren't going to get it right. Sometimes we're going to have staff do things that are not in alignment with our discipline philosophy. Or we might even have an administrator that does something that's not alignment. We want to be able to make sure parents know what their, the rights are, that they have the ability to appeal. So our appeal process is kind of outlined in there. And so, last year, through our Project Aware Grant, we started doing these positive foundations courses for parents, and they're mostly online. One of the offerings that we want to do is kind of a walkthrough of the code. So kind of a, just a conversation about the code, the intent behind it, the purpose behind it, and some feedback to parents about, you know, if you, if you ever run into this situation, you feel like there wasn't a fair resolution, or weren't, weren't treated the way that you expected, that we bring resolution to that. And that was some feedback that we got from one of the community groups. They're like, a lot of words, great document, same thing, but how user-friendly is this to parents? And so, that was one of our ideas, is could we turn this into somewhat of a conversation, a resource, so, so parents know, hey, this is, this is our agreement too. We've, we've committed to follow that through. So I'd be.
So that's, yeah, one avenue of accountability. The others, you know, we want to ensure that all of our teachers see this, you know. So start of the year, you know, when we talk about discipline and how that happens, you know, our principals will work with teachers to ensure that they understand what this looks like. Not everyone necessarily agrees with every element of this, or maybe they do superficially, but in practice, they haven't yet implemented some of these the way we would prefer. And so, there'll be a learning curve, you know, for folks. But now that we have it written down, there's something we can refer to in our conversations with folks when they make a misstep, or they're still adapting to, you know, what our expectations are. First thing was to write it down. And then the second thing here, this, at the beginning of this year, is to let folks know, you know, like, this is, these are our expectations. Then give them an opportunity to work with that. And then to this year, you know, it'll be to implement it. And some of these, like, staff dispositions are, are difficult for some folks, you know. They haven't successfully done this every time historically. And so, it'll be a work in progress. But now we have, you know, specific things to refer folks to, and we'll be able to support them in their journey.
Okay, so follow up to that. If I understand correctly, then if a parent feels that it has been violated, there is a process in place for how they report that, I guess, then to, yeah. So then, we are developing a process in place for then how to address that? Or is there a process in place for how to address that?
And there's the process we've always used in like addressing the issues that come up with staff, you know. So if a parent, you know, something, a, a teacher interacts with a child, the parent feels that's unfair, they let their principal know or another administrator, you know, there's a process in place for addressing that with the teacher. You know, it should be investigated by the administrator that supervises them. And, you know, they should refer back to this document and talk about what expectations are. If it's egregious, you know, then there could be, you know, a series of disciplinary actions that could potentially be taken.
Do you think that there will be further policy or practices developed to, with a specific focus on these pieces, just to further solidify that? For example, would that be part of a review process going forward?
Yeah. So the challenge then would be to collect information in some way, you know, to understand how frequently folks aren't successful at complying with these expectations. And I think unless it's a formal appeal, which we could collect if it was more casual, which happens, you know, like, I mean, it happens probably, and hopefully not regularly, but, you know, it's not infrequent that a parent calls and say, hey, like, this happened with my kid, what's the deal? And then the parent and the teacher work through it, and it's resolved in some manner. And, you know, sometimes there's apologies involved or, you know, remedies. But we wouldn't necessarily know about that beyond the, the building level. And so, that would point to some sort of tracking system, which may be difficult, like, when does it rise to that?
Honestly, I think I'm just, I, I think questions I'm asking are what any parent would ask with, when reading this, which is, yeah, it's, there's the, the philosophy here, it's great that there's a process in place for me to report it. But then asking what happens next and how this is going to be institutionalized and into the district. And I'm not saying that you, by the way, have to have all of those answers right now, but we should expect those answers and have questions and have answers to them going forward.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine that if appeals got up to the next level, right? So let's say that something happens with a teacher or an administrator, and it goes to the next level, that they ask for, you know, you know, redress in some way. If the parent's satisfied because it was dealt with in a way that they felt like addressed, you know, our expectations, then it wouldn't go any further. You know, if it continues to be an issue where they feel unsatisfied, that's where it would be something we would want to take note of and record and follow up on.
And, and I think where I'm really, what, what underpins my question is just to know that, I assume since now we have codified this and written this down, that we might expect, for example, professional development going forward would incorporate some of these specific elements. And I guess I'm just sort of looking for confirmation that this is what, when I talk about like bringing that in and changing culture or those kind of things, that, I, that's what I'm looking for as part of the processes. You know, I know you said that when educators, sharing this is one piece of it. But I think all of us know that there is more training and professional development that probably will be necessary around it.
So these concepts all align with our strategic plan for educational equity. And all of our professional development is aligned with that strategy. So these things are in complete alignment with that larger strategy. They all nest. So everything a, a teacher gets, you know, whether you. So everything a teacher gets, you know, whether you're developing positive relationships, maintaining high expectations, seeking out restorative practices, those will all be incorporated into everything they do, so they'll be bathing in this philosophy in all of our professional development.
I think the only comment I would make is that I think most of our conversation is centered around teachers. I think it would be for all staff, correct? I mean, if we had somebody who was a non-teacher, who was not following this, there would be conversations, they would be receiving professional development, same with administrators. So it's all educational staff within the school district of La Crosse, correct?
Absolutely, our administrative assistants, our TAs, you know, those folks have as many opportunities to address student behavior as anyone, so absolutely, we want this to, that's why it's staff disposition, it's not just the teachers, you know, it includes us as administrators. If we go out to the buildings and we're dealing with folks, those same expectations are in place for us, you know, who are here at Hogan, as are in the buildings.
Any other comments from the staff, oh, the staff, from the board? Hearing none, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to the next item, the 2021-2022 Proposed Budget and Instructional Priorities. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Engel again.
So this is part of our, one of Patty's OEs. I can't remember the one specifically, five, four, three. It's built into our budget book. And so these instructional priorities indicate our financial priorities. And so that's why it's crucial that we let the board know about these, because they support the development of that final monitoring report. And with some of our monitoring reports, we split them out over the course of the year, so it's not overwhelming and all at once. And we want you to get this information when it's most pertinent, in this case instructional priorities, leading into the start of the school year, is a great time to talk about those. And so with that, I will turn it over to Patty, if she has any words about how this fits in, and then to Troy.
I would just say that this is a great introduction to it, because you will see it again.
So I'll start by just saying, you know, fresh eyes on kind of a document that's been around for a while is an exciting opportunity. And so I'll just take all of you back to several months ago, when Dr. Engel came into my office, and he must have been looking through the budget book, and he said, "Troy, I see the instructional priorities are part of the budget book." Yes, they are. And I see that there's, I don't know, sixteen, eighteen, twenty pages. And I'm excited at that point, yes! And he said those numbers to me again, there's sixteen, eighteen, twenty pages of instructional priorities. And it dawned on me, he was looking for some synthesis of the instructional priorities. We went through, and I let him know that all the program supervisors, they go through this wonderful exercise with their staff, and, you know, how do we get to those instructional priorities? And he said, "That's wonderful, that is all, that's great." For the budget book, I would like this condensed. And so what you see before you tonight is, Mr. Abraham, this is probably for you, it's new, and I would say the same thing to any of the new board members. For the board members who've been here, you understand that this document was much, much longer historically. We did, all of the program supervisors did a great job of actually condensing their work to what's linked in there, to what is an eight-page document that you will see in September as part of OE11. But I do have just a couple of comments regarding these instructional priorities, if you'll indulge me for just a couple of minutes here. You heard Dr. Engel in OE8 reference the strategic plan. I will tell you that our instructional priorities foundational are all built on that strategic plan that was presented to the board back on March 1st. We could stop the instructional priority conversation right there. However, I will tell you that there were a couple of other documents that helped create some themes that if you were to click on that link of the eight-page document, you will see, you know, throughout the work of the content area supervisors, supervisors of programs, and directors of programs, that aligns just amicably with the board's mission statements, the administrative goals that Dr. Engel had brought forward in May. And one of those other elements is early literacy. And we really feel like that is work that's foundational to our district as well, and clearly aligns well with the strategic plan for our district. And while we say early literacy and we're focusing on K3, that does not mean that we're stopping the effort with other grade levels, of course, but I think that needs to be voiced and put out there in the ether so that people understand that. Part of our effort included in that is offering to support teacher in the acquisition of their 1316 or 316, their reading teacher license in the district. We have many, many teachers taking advantage of that opportunity. We also are working on standards-based learning in the district. Our elementary schools have been, you know, on the forefront of this for quite some time. You've heard Stacy Eversen talk about this at the secondary level. I'm going to read you some names, because Stacy will be the first person to tell you that she's not championing this effort alone, she's selfless in that regard. But let me just, again, put these names out there. Ruth Bardseth, Jill Emrick, Kristy Holinka, Kate Keeney, Jen Voit, Kim Novak, and others. But the district has a lot of champions around this effort, and we believe that we're great, we're going to be grading for learning. And the grading portion is what takes up the lion's share of people's attention. But we are talking about more than just standards-based grading. Okay, we're talking about standards-based learning, which encompasses a variety of elements, including when you adopted and approved the annual academic standards earlier tonight, priority learning standards, which simply means we've got some areas we're focusing on for mastery learning. It doesn't mean we're not teaching all these standards, it just means we've got some areas of focus that we want students to learn to mastery. And then finally, I would just tell you that we'd be remiss if we didn't talk a little bit about this pandemic, right? We've had some interruptions, some learning. And to the point brought up earlier about the professional development necessary for things like our code, et cetera, we've got a whole-child approach that we're focusing on in the school district of La Crosse. And so that includes social-emotional learning, resilient trauma-form teaching, mental health supports. And we're very fortunate in the school district of La Crosse, because we were able to bring in what we're calling student success coaches. Student success coach on the academic side and the behavior side to help with accelerating some learning for students who we know had some interrupted learning over the last fifteen months. And so we understand that that's very real, but again, we're taking a whole-child approach in that we know that we've got some students who were put in a very spongy, uneven situation over the last so many months. And so we've got a few years here with a pretty unique situation. We're going to be following some metrics closely to try to accelerate learning for students. And so we're pretty excited about that. As mentioned here at the beginning, that, I think Patty mentioned it actually, we're going to be bringing all of these back. It's a piece of, evidentiary piece for OE11, which according to GC6E, we're going to be bringing back in September. And I will tell you that OE is substantial, it's a significant one, so we'll have to buckle in for that one, and we'll be here for a little bit with OE11. But having said that, I'll answer any questions with this kind of broad overview of these four major instructional priorities going into this next school year.
Questions from the board?
Can I just ask a question about one of the links in the document that you provided? Because I was able to access the one to, like, the strategic plan we've seen in the larger document that you referenced. And I just want to make sure that I'm looking at the right thing, because when I click on the other piece that was hyperlinked, was the professional development piece on that? And if the document that's attached to that is the one we're supposed to be looking at, it's fairly blank. There's, I'm not, if there are links in there, I'm not able to access any. Am I looking at the right thing?
It shouldn't be blank, I don't know if it's a victim of our slow internet tonight.
I'm getting the same thing, I think the internet.
But what I will tell you, what I will tell you, Dr. Cooperstol, is that is the associated staff development plan to the strategic plan. And give lots of credit to our supervisor of educator readiness, Kelly Schmitz, and her team putting that together. But it is going to be truly a wondrous plan aligned with our strategic plan.
I will take your word for that, because I can't actually, honestly, I was like, if this is the plan, we we've got a long way to go. Okay, so it's just that it's not coming up.
There's tabs, when it does come up, there's tabs for each of those categories. I did the same thing.
I do see it on Patty's screen, and it's glorious.
It's purple and everything, I mean, it's got colors.
I just want to comment, I really appreciate the way the instructional priorities are available, and they're easy to read, and there's a lot of good stuff in there, stuff that we've talked about, and just a nice summary of the goals that we're already, the district, looking on, so. I appreciate that.
Thank you for that, Mr. Corbirk. At this point, they should be aligned to all of those documents and things that have come before this. So you should see alignment, and it should be up, that's what the board has been talking about, and the superintendent's been talking about, so there shouldn't be any surprises at this late stage.
Any other comments?
I appreciate the work that you took to condense that. That's oftentimes a challenge, not so much the expansion, but getting that into a more synthesized version. Appreciate that.
I think the only comment I have is that I appreciate the student-centered approach that we've taken with instructional priorities, and also, Mr. Teff, with the student handbook. I really appreciate the fact that, for the student handbook, students are involved in the conversation, and that we can hear directly from them. I think it's important for them to take ownership in some way. But I also appreciate the re-engaging in schooling on this priority. I think that is a key piece, especially given what we've experienced, and knowing what students have gone through, and what we have gone through individually. But that re-engagement piece, I think, is so critical, and so I appreciate the work in putting that in. So thank you for that. Any other comments before we move on? Okay. Hearing none, then we will move on to our announcements. Ms. Baumann is not here, so we do not have an update from the Public Education Foundation. The only thing I have for my announcements is a reminder that any proposed resolutions for WASB should be reviewed as information at our next board meeting. And then we will submit proposals to the Board Secretary, Ms. Galban, by August 12th, and then they'll be reviewed at our final meeting in August before they can be submitted and meet the deadline of September 15th. So if we have any proposals or proposed resolutions, could you please get those in? We would appreciate that. Moving on, we'll go to the announcements by Superintendent Engel.
Let's have a few announcements. First, we finished our last community facility planning meeting last week, Wednesday. Good feedback from a wide range of community members, and some resulting media from that. So been good conversation, look forward to continuing that. We have specific focus groups with the Chamber of Commerce and the City of La Crosse coming up, so look forward to that feedback as well. And then we anticipate a workshop, the second meeting in August, to kind of discuss the survey that we'll be drafting to put out, so we should have a draft of that to discuss at that time. Legislative update, the governor signed the biennium that was sent to him with some minor line item vetoes. Ms. Sprang can add any additional detail, but not really a lot of additional money for education in this biennium.
There's no per pupil increase, so that will affect our revenue limit. And what they did do to meet the funding requirements so that we don't lose the ESER funds was to increase the general aid. So the general aid, as you know, the revenue limit is made up of the general aid plus the local taxes. And so if they do not increase the revenue limit, but they increase the general aid, it decreases the local property taxes. It does not mean any more money for our students, so.
Yeah, so we'll be navigating that as we move forward. There was a commitment to increase reimbursement for special education services, but it's not a some-sufficient amount, it is variable. So it's unlikely, in this first year at least, that we'll see any increase in reimbursement for special education services. So we'll be looking at our budget as we move forward. You know, our budget, given our declining enrollment, isn't as greatly impacted in the first year as it might have been, but it will be very impactful in the second year. And so we'll be giving you more information as we figure out the specific details of that this summer. And then start of the 21-22 school year. First day of school was last week, Thursday, for Northside and for Hamilton. It was a wonderful day, it's my favorite day of the school year. Kids got off of buses and walked to school and had a great day. Of course, we're still in the middle of a pandemic, and we're still addressing COVID cases. Throughout the beginning part of the summer, cases were very low, down to zero many days in the, over the last, over a seven-day average in the La Crosse County, so that was very exciting. We're starting to see an uptick, we're starting to see more of the Delta variant, which is much more transmissible. We're encouraging everyone to get vaccinated, that is the number-one thing we can do to limit spread and keep our schools open. And while we haven't had masks for the last couple of months, you know, we're looking at what are the thresholds that we would meet to reinstate that? You know, the CDC has made recommendations for unvaccinated folks to be wearing masks at school. The Association of Pediatrics, American Associated Pediatrics indicated that they recommend all people to wear masks regardless, so we're taking that into account. But we've been following the Harvard Global Health Institute's recommendations since last July, you know, which has a threshold at which you might not wear masks and social distance, and that's set at one case per day. So that's something that we're looking at as well. We'll be providing some updates here this week to you all and our parents about what our expectations are. We want students to have access to school, we want them to have the best possible learning environment, and we know that that's generally best in person. So anything we can do to keep kids at school, we're going to try and pursue. So we can anticipate that somebody will be unhappy in the near future as we probably look at wearing masks when it makes sense, and occasionally not wearing masks if it makes sense, you know, in various settings. And so we'll be navigating that same terrain we did this whole last year. But we want to follow the advice of experts and the science, and do what's right to protect our children, so.
I want to ask you about the other thing that people are never happy about, and that's construction. How is transportation going with construction around, like, Northside where Gillette Street is closed, and Hamilton? So I'm just wondering if everything's going okay because of that? If it's creating chaos with driving, or?
I have not heard any specific complaints. Shelley's indicating that she hasn't heard anything specific.
Gillette closed down, like, in April of last year, so those first few days, there were some challenges, but they really worked that system out in the spring, and so then it was just reinstated and that.
There's construction everywhere right now, you can't drive anywhere without finding a detour. It's nice, I get to experience new parts of the city. But it hasn't been a major hindrance, and Northside and Hamilton have a lot of kids that walk, so it's been relatively easy for them to navigate those detours. And then they get to see awesome construction equipment everywhere they go, so it's just really exciting for kids. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Engel. We'll move on to the agenda planning.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for August 2nd, 2021 Board of Education meeting, with any additions or corrections.
Motion has been made by Mr. Corbirk, seconded by Ms. Como, to approve the August 2nd, 2021 Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? The motion has carried. We'll move on to our board debriefing, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cooperstol.
Thank you, Dr. Cooperstol. The board debriefing, as you know, tends to focus around a few key questions. First one being, what are things that we did well tonight? And I would say that, from my perspective, there's been some good discussion around there's been some good discussion around agenda items for this evening. It's nice to have questions and comments from board members here who are present. And so, and we've stayed on task where that was, that was concerned. With regards to what didn't work well for us or things we can improve on, I think it's rare that we have a board meeting where we have so, we're missing a number of board members. But I think when they're not here, it's felt, obviously, because we, we miss out on some of that feedback, and that can't be helped at times. And I'm saying that even though in August, I can't be here. But I would say that that's one thing that I think we, I think we do really well when everyone is here and able to contribute. So I think that, that was just something that we missed out on this, this, this evening. And that would be my feedback I would offer. If there were any other comments people wanted to add to what we did well or what we can improve on.
I think we can improve on the internet.
Oh, well, yeah. Oh, I forgot. I was asked, I was, it was suggested that I.
And what we did well are patience and flexibility in navigating the meeting in terms of the limitations of the internet.
Yes.
Being in IT, I totally understand. It's a hundred percent joke. I appreciate you guys.
Other comments from the other board members? I think the only things I would have is, I would echo both items. First, that it was a great conversation had with the board, and I, I love the, the energy that happens when we get to those points where we're involved in those deep conversations on things. So thank you to everybody around the table. And then also to our IT department, it is, it's got to be a challenge to, to worry about internet issues. But yes, we totally understand, and we are so grateful for the work that you all do. So thank you for that. With that, then I think we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.